Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the January 17th City Council Meeting. And at this time, I'd like to call Pastor Ken Bowman forward from the Church of Christ, Glenn Bowman from the Church of Christ, forward for the opening prayer.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, so much for this new year. We know any day you give us is a gift and a start of something new. But we pray that we will take advantage in 2018 and see it as having so much potential, Lord, because we know that you bring any potential anything today that you desire to pass on alive. We pray so greatly blessed is the community this year. We pray so to you, to people who are making decisions here, the vision in the heart and the mind to be able to make the best decisions for your glory, for the city to grow and to be everything you want it to be, Lord.
Help each of us individually to have a great heart for you, Lord, to have spiritual revival as well, not just revival of physical things as community, but spiritual things and help the families and just everyone here, Lord, to really have a heart to seek you and that the crops will be blessed all around and that people's lives will be blessed and the economy will be blessed and everything will go for your glory and honor. We pray that you'll bless this meeting, that it will go and people will decide things as you see best, Lord, because you have the wisdom and we just give you the praise and the thanks for it. Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call to order the City Council Meeting of January 17th, 2017. And Commander Haddon, would you lead us in the flag salute?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which ascends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's go to item three, roll call. Director Maloney.
Johnson Santos. Lewis. Silveira. Valalta.
Here. We do have a quorum. And let's go on to consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Okay. Let's go to Mr. Faria.
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Lewis.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Faria, second by Lewis to approve the agenda stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay. Let's go on to public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the Council Chamber informational table. And before we start the public comments section, we have a presentation of a proclamation this evening, and it is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And could I please have the individuals present here this evening to accept this?
Lena Conno.
Chee Ying.
Well, thank you so much for coming this evening. And at this time, I'd like to read this proclamation. Proclamation recognizing January as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery. It is also the second fastest-growing criminal industry in the United States, whereas human trafficking endangers the lives of millions of people around the world, and it is a crime that knows no borders. Human trafficking networks operate both domestically and internationally. And although abuse disproportionately affects women and girls, the victims of this global tragedy are men, women, and children of all ages. The International Labor Organization recognizes there are an estimated 40.3 million people in modern slavery globally, where one in four victims are children. The National Center for Missing and Exploited Children estimates one out of six endangered runaways are likely child sex trafficking victims. The U.S. Department of Labor identified 139 goods from 75 countries made by forced child labor. Valley Crisis Center provides resources to empower self-sufficiency, restore dignity, and support recovery from trauma for survivors. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the City Council members of the city of Los Banos to hereby proclaim January as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month in the city of Los Banos and ask that citizens from Los Banos to educate themselves about all forms of modern slavery and all the signs and consequences of human trafficking. Together, we can continue to support the efforts related to human trafficking prevention, the survivor assistance program, and hold perpetrators accountable for their actions. And at this time, I would like to present you with this proclamation. And would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. For those of you that do not know about the services that is provided by Valley Crisis Center, we are a domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking agency. We support individuals throughout Merced County with this issue. And in regards to that, I'm going to have Lena here speak a little about our stats that we've collected in the last year on human trafficking in actually Merced County.
Hello. I am Lena Conno. I am with Valley Crisis Center. I'm the human trafficking advocate. So, as we all know, human trafficking not only affects the victims, but it also affects our community as a whole. Because of the help of our community, we at Valley Crisis Center are shedding light on modern-day slavery. We know we are not living under a rock, and this crime happens here in the Central Valley, here in Merced County, here in Los Banos. And since we opened our program to provide services and change policy around human trafficking as of April 2016 to December 2017, we have serviced a total of 75 clients here in Merced County. Out of the 75 clients, 71 were domestic clients born here in the United States, four international clients born outside of the United States. This includes sex trafficking, labor trafficking, and just recently, organ trafficking. We will continue to work with survivors of human trafficking in our county, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you so much, and thank you for coming this evening and making everyone aware of what is happening, and please continue your good works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to invite everybody to our, we're having a fundraiser. It's Cisco.
Right here.
It's on play.
Start over.
On February 17th at 2:00, we're having a fundraiser. It's a play, it's Dr. Seuss, it's called Cisco. I hope I pronounced it right, Chee. But it's on February 17th at 2:00 at Playhouse Merced, and we're asking the community if they'd be interested in sponsoring at-risk youth to attend the play. Many of the at-risk youths have never been to a play, so we'd like our community's support if you're interested or if you'd like to sponsor a child. Please contact our office at 725-7900. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
All right. So if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak during the public forum, please come forward now. Oh, there you go. All right. Okay, not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum. Go on to item six, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And tonight we have, Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 208560 through 208707 in the amount of $494,263.60. Minutes for the January 3rd, 2018 City Council meeting. Minutes for the January 10th, 2018 adjourned joint City Council and Planning Commission meeting. City Council Resolution Number 5930 consenting to inclusion of properties within the city's jurisdiction in the Golden State Finance Authority Community Facilities District, Number 2014-1 Clean Energy, to finance renewable energy improvements, energy efficiency and water conservation improvements, electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and other improvements, and approving associate membership and the joint exercise of powers authority related thereto. And as I was putting the packet together, I missed listing a resolution that was included in your staff report, and it would be Resolution Number 5932. And it's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Los Banos, California consenting to inclusion. Is that right, or am I reading it again?
Yes.
It was just brought to my attention. I apologize.
Sure.
Oh, it's in the back. It's Resolution Number 5932 consenting to inclusion of properties within the city's jurisdiction in the Golden State Finance Authority Program to finance renewable energy generation, energy and water efficiency improvements, electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and other improvements, and approving associate membership and the joint exercise of powers authority related thereto. And those are the items to be approved as submitted, including the one that I added.
Director Williams, did you wish to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Items on the consent agenda to be voted on in one motion. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item for discussion at this time? If not, do I have a motion? Mr. Silveira.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read with the correction by the city clerk.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mr. Faria.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion by Silveira, second by Faria to approve the consent agenda stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item seven. Consideration of adoption of City Council Resolution Number 5931, accepting the 2016-2017 fiscal year audit reports consisting of a comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, and the government auditing standards report. And we will go to Finance Director Williams.
Good evening, members. Tonight, staffs recommending that council adopt a resolution accepting the 2016-17 comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR, and the government auditing standards report prepared by Price, Page &amp; Company, our independent auditors. And tonight, Foster Hanosa with Price, Page &amp; Company is here to give you a brief overview of the financials, and myself and Foster will be available to answer any questions.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight and make a presentation regarding the results of our audit. I know you have a full agenda, so I'm going to be brief. And I'd like to basically start at page one of our audited financial statements, which is our independent auditor's report. The first paragraph of that report basically identifies the financial statements that were audited, which are the June 30, 2017 financial statements, as you know. Second paragraph of that report, though, is very important. Talks about management's responsibility for the financial statements. And in that paragraph, there's a section, a sentence, that describes that management is responsible for the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control. So as outside external auditors, we are not a part of your internal control structure. It's our responsibility to conduct an audit in accordance with auditing standards, and as a part of conducting that audit, our responsibility is to obtain an understanding of the design of your internal controls and whether those controls have been placed in operation. And we do that at the same time that we obtain an understanding of the city's operations, the scope of operations in multiple areas. We obtain that understanding in order to conduct a risk assessment. So the audit process really is a risk-based process. And so our job is to determine whether there are any significant risks of error or fraud. So those are the two things that we're looking for. So as we obtain an understanding of controls, as we obtain an understanding of operations, we're focused on identifying significant risks. Once we identify those risks, then we prepare or design audit procedures that are responsive to those risks. So for example, if we thought that your internal control system over purchasing was not as effective as it should be, then we would design audit procedures to go focus specifically and see if there were any problems, errors, or fraud again in that area. And so that's how that audit process works. Our independent auditor's report there on page one, the final paragraph of that first page is our opinion. And so in our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material, excuse me, all material respects, in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. And so materiality is an important concept in an audit of financial statements. There is probably not enough time or enough auditors to audit every single transaction of the city of Los Banos. And so the audit, which I described as a risk-based audit, also is an audit that is conducted in accordance with an assessment of materiality. Materiality is a subjective concept that auditors use, but we, it's a subjective concept, but we do have numbers that we attribute or assign to that. So for example, $852 check is not as significant as an $852,000 check, right? And so we can't look at every item again, and so we establish materiality levels across the various funds and across various account types. And then we focus on transactions that meet our materiality thresholds as we select transactions for testing. So again, our opinion is an unmodified or a clean opinion that states that the financial statements are fairly presented. I don't plan to spend time going through the financial statements. They're June 30, again, 2017, and I know that you have a very effective finance team that provides monthly financial information. So what I'd like to do, though, is point out just a couple of significant estimates that are included in the financial statements. And an estimate is just that. It's an estimate. It's not a hard number. So cash, for example, we can confirm how much cash is in the bank. That's a hard number. There are a couple of estimates, and the two that I want to discuss tonight, just very briefly, are estimates of liabilities. The first one is the landfill closure and post-closure care payable. And so there is an estimate of that liability that's included in the financial statements. You can find that estimate on page 16 of the financial statements. That number is $5.2 million. So that's not a hard number, right? That's the best estimate of what it's going to cost to finally, what would you say, clean close? Is that the proper term? To clean-close that landfill. And so our job as auditors is to determine what the basis was for that estimate, and then to apply audit procedures to see whether those estimate, whether the estimate was reasonable. The other estimate, and the much larger one, the one that has been, had significant discussion across government in the last couple of years, is the net pension liability. And so that number also you can find on page 16, and that number is just under $20 million. The net pension liability, just under $20 million. It's on page 16, but there is a footnote that begins at about page, it's a long footnote. It begins at page 54 and goes for several pages through about seven or eight pages of information. Couple of things that I'd like to discuss with respect to that, that will have relevance to your budgeting process moving forward, and I know your finance team is aware of it. Over on page 58 of this pension footnote, there is disclosure there of what your annual contribution was for the year. So over on page 58, your annual contribution to the PERS plan was $2.4 million. Again, the total liability, just under $20 million. There's something that's called a discount rate. The actuaries that calculate this number, they apply a discount rate. That discount rate basically is PERS-assumed rate of return on investments. So their, the discount rate that they're currently using is 7.65. So the actuaries say, okay, PERS expects to earn 7.65 on its investments over the long term. And in the, I guess in the last year or so, you know, I mean, with the stock market, everything has been great moving up. We understand that that wasn't the case before. And so PERS, in looking at the long term, they have a three-year plan to decrease that expected rate of return, right? And so as they decrease that rate of return, the liability increases because they're not expecting that their investments are going to make as much money, they're not going to make that 7.65 rate. So that rate, that discount rate is going to be decreasing, and in the 18, 19 fiscal year, so the year ended June 30, 19, that rate is going to go from the 7.65 that it's currently at to 7.375, then to 7.25, and finally, in the year 2021, it will be at 7%. That may not, may not sound like that difference is all of that significant, but if you look at page 61, there's a, there's a little table there that shows that the liability currently calculated at the 7.65 rate is the $20 million that's included in your financial statements. However, if that rate changes by one point and that rate goes down to 6.65, that $20 million liability is actually a $30 million liability. So a small change in that discount rate causes a big increase in the liability. And again, the, it's not a projection, but PERS has already said that they are going to be decreasing that discount rate over the next three years. I know, again, that your finance team is already aware of this, and they're going to be incorporating that into your budget. But that's very significant, again, as you can see, because currently it's at $20 million as that decreases, that number is going to increase significantly. So again, I didn't want to go through the financial statements in any detail. I'm glad to answer any questions that anybody might have. I would like to express my team's appreciation to Ms. Williams and Ms. Tomas for their assistance and their entire team. One of the things that we assess when we're assessing risks as auditors is the transparency, the responsiveness of the finance team when they're responding to our inquiries and when they're providing documents. And I can share with you that we had no concerns in any of those areas. Your team was extremely responsive, and we were able to complete our audit in a timely manner.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. Council members, are there any comments? Staff members? Anything? Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
So when you talk about that discount rate, and I know maybe this is, I hope this is a question for you, so as a city, what can we do to be preparing for that?
That's probably a question for Ms. Williams, but from my perspective, I mean, PERS is going to do what they're going to do. They've already decided they're going to decrease that discount rate. The only thing I guess you can do is put more money into the plan, but I'm not sure what your, what the, what the current plan is.
I guess I don't know how this works. So we've discussed that a little bit during budget time, and that is one of the things that we'll be looking at, is paying down the unfunded liability. That's the best that we could do besides staying on top of it. We have a number of employees, like, we have different tiers that we've discussed before, so we have a lot of employees that are at a higher level tier, and that's where the most expensive rate is coming in. As the new hires come in, unless it's a classic employee, they're going into Peppera, otherwise they're at a center tier. But the only thing that's really going to help us at this point is to pay down on the unfunded liability.
And the Peppera, are you familiar with?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's getting the ones, the high liability ones that have been, been getting them off the books, I guess.
They don't?
They don't go off the books.
They don't go off the books. After they retire, they don't go off the books. They have to actually...
Through attrition, we get to the Peppera employee.
Very nice way to put it.
Well, I just, a comment again, I, I don't, can't say enough good things about our, our financial staff. I think we repeat this every, every year. This is my seventh year on the council. From, you know, when we first, when I first went through my first round of audit reports, actually, the first ones were late. We didn't do them, like, we did like, almost like, two years in one time, going from where there was quite a few findings, like, actually, like, pages of findings, to, I don't know how many years in a row now, these are, we've had nice, clean audit reports, and that's a testament to our finance director and, and all of our finance staff. They're, they're a hard-working team, and I feel like they're a well-oiled machine. And I feel confident that as things tend to pick up here in Los Banos, that we actually, we have the ability to know how to run our, our finances, where I, I'm not faulting anybody from before, but I just think they weren't capable, they didn't know what they had. There was so much money coming in with the boom, they didn't, they didn't quite know how to track it all, and that's what leads to problems. So kudos to them, and, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from any other council member? Well, thank you so much. All the accolades that you receive are well-deserved, and, and thank you for your, your services. And, and I think we, we all feel very confident that, that our, our financial woes of the past are in the past, and that there's such close monitoring now that, that I think we just feel so much better that if, if there is anything, or, or if revenues start to decrease, at least we'll have a plan that's realistic to handle the decrease or the increase in revenue. So thank you so much. How many years have you been with us now?
I think this is our fourth or fifth.
Fourth?
This is the fourth year.
Fantastic. Okay.
Thank you.
So, if I could have a, a motion, I appreciate it. Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number five-nine-three-one, accepting the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen fiscal year audit reports consisting of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFER, and the Government Auditing Standards Report.
Mr. Freya?
I'll second that report, second that motion with commendations and compliments to staff. Outstanding work. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Silveira, second by Mr. Freya. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Thank you. Let's go on to item eight. Consideration of Adoption of Ordinance Number one-one-six-one, adopting a code reorganization relating to a business regulation adding a new Title XI to the Los Banas Municipal Code and a reorganization of chapters, articles, and sections, and the renumbering of certain provisions of the code. This is a second reading and adoption, and we're going to go to Community and Economic... Oh, we're going to go to the attorney? Okay. I am going to... Okay. Well, I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to press both buttons, and then that way, you can talk at will. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, members of the audience. This, this item was presented to you at the last meeting on January third. Before you tonight is the second reading and the adoption, request to adopt the ordinance as submitted. If you recall from our last meeting, this is simply a reorganization, kind of a housekeeping, actually, in our project to clean up our business licensing. It came to our attention that we have chapters within our municipal code now that are kind of scattered all over the code, from the finance code to the health and safety code, so on and so forth. So, the Community Economic Development Director and myself thought it would be a good idea to try to get all of those chapters that have to do with business regulation, get them under one new title, which we're calling Title XI, which we will be calling, I believe, Business Regulation, so that there's ease for staff to find things, not searching through the code for a particular type of business regulation, and easier for the public, as they're looking through our code, to say, oh, business regulation may be the item I'm looking for, is in that title. So, the staff report, the last two staff reports set forth what we're doing in more detail, which I will not do tonight. There are a couple of attachments to your staff report that show you the chapters that will be moving to the new title, Title XI. So, that's my report. We're recommending that you waive the second reading and that you consider adoption of the ordinance as submitted. I don't believe this is a public hearing, so you don't need to open it up for a public hearing if you don't want to.
Okay. With that, though, if there's, before I bring it to council level, if there's anyone who'd like to speak from the public, they may do so now on this item, item eight. Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close a public hearing, bring it back to council level, and this is a second reading and adoption. So, we received a staff report. Staff, any que, or council staff, any questions or comments? Okay. So, we're going to waive the second reading in one motion, and then we're going to adopt the ordinance in the other. So, could I please have a, a motion to waive the second reading first? Mrs. Lewis?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of Ordinance Number one-one-six-one, as read by title.
Okay. Mr. Freya?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Lewis, second by Mr. Freya, to waive the, the second reading of ordinance... Number...
One-one-six-one.
One-one-six-one, I'm sorry. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion to adopt Ordinance Number one-one-six-one, as read by title.
Mr. Freya?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Lewis to, for the adoption of Ordinance Number one-one-six-one, and second by Mr. Freya. Roll call vote. Director Maloney?
Freya?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Valalta?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Let's go on to item nine. Consideration of Appeal by Su Fen Lu, DBA China Massage, from the decision of the Community and Economic Development Department Director to suspend, to suspend the proceeding of a business license application. All right? So, we are going to go to... Okay. Would you please come forward? It says presentation-based. Okay. Okay. All right. We are now going to have a presentation by Community Economic Development Director, Mrs. Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
We've lost it? How about that?
All right. So, I want to start with some background on this particular item before you. The Community and Economic Development Department received an application for a business license on September fifteenth of two thousand and seventeen for China Massage at six-two-nine J Street. The applicant was Su Fen Lu. Since that time, the Community and Economic Development Department has processed the application. And then in November, Ordinance eleven-fifty-nine, and then in December sixth, Ordinance eleven-sixty, placed a moratorium on massage establishments. And I do want to go through the order of events, the list of facts and dates as they have occurred as the Community and Economic Development Department, in accordance, as we see it. And so, we received the application on September fifteenth. This is all located on page two of your staff report, which was the date that the application was submitted and paid for. Then on September nineteenth, the Community and Economic Development Department contacted the fire department and the building department, as well as the police department, to request a business walk inspection. Then on September twenty-second, the Community and Economic Development Department contacted Mercedic County Health Department as we were notified by the applicant that they had a hot tub located within the business, and we wanted to make sure that any additional health permits, if they were necessary, would be through the health department. Then on September twenty-ninth, the fire department, building department, and health department performed a site inspection. On that date, it was determined by the health department that a permit was not needed for the hot tub, as there was no recirculating water. And then the fire department and building department each provided a list of corrections to the applicant. It's in the form of a punch list, and it is given to the applicant. Then on October tenth, the fire department was called back. They performed an inspection at the request of the applicant on the list of their corrections previously provided. The establishment at that time did not complete all of the items on their correction list, so they were not cleared by the fire department on that date. Then on October twenty-eighth, the fire department performed an inspection at the request of the applicant, and it was determined that all items had been corrected. So, the fire department notified the Community and Economic Development Department that all items from their correction list had been addressed. I do want to note that that particular inspection was just the fire department. It did not include the building department's inspections, nor their punch list. Then on November first, the Los Banas City Council adopted Ordinance eleven-fifty-nine, as I previously mentioned, which established a temporary moratorium on massage establishments. Then on November third, the applicant inquired to the status of their business license, and the building department reminded the applicant that their correction letter from the Chief Building Inspector, Al Silva, was never addressed, and the business license was not cleared by their department for approval. Then on November twenty-first, a notice of intent was sent to the applicant to deny issuance of the business license in accordance with Ordinance eleven-fifty-nine, which established the temporary moratorium of massage establishments. Then on December fifth, the Community and Economic Development Department received a request by the applicant to schedule a meeting with myself, the director, to discuss the notice of the intent. On December eleventh, I met with the applicant to discuss the notice of intent and moratorium, and explained the moratorium, and that the applicant was notified at that time that the business license was to be suspended until the moratorium was lifted. On December sixth, the Los Banas City Council adopted Ordinance eleven-sixty, extending the temporary moratorium of massage establishments until a new massage ordinance would be in place. Then on December fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, a notice of suspension of processing issuance of a business license was sent to the applicant. The letter stated that, based on the moratorium of Ordinance eleven-fifty-nine and eleven-sixty, the processing of the business license would be suspended until the moratorium was lifted. So, then on December twenty-first, the applicant requested an inspection by the building department, and on that date, the building department did not clear the building for occupancy or that they had passed their inspections. They still had outstanding items to be addressed. Then on December twenty-first, the Community and Economic Development Department, we received a request for appeal of the notice of suspension. And then on December twenty-second, my department notified the applicant with a letter that we were in receipt of the appeal, and we scheduled a hearing date with our city clerk for the Los Banas City Council. So, that brings us to today's date. As the department sees it, the moratorium is in effect in accordance to the Moratorium, Article nine, Section seven of the California Constitution, the California Government Code, Section six-five-eight-five-eight, and in accordance with our rights as police powers of a city, no license, permit, or other entitlement for use shall be approved for the establishment of a massage establishment. So, on that basis, that is what my determination was based on, and the applicant was notified that their business license processing was suspended until the moratorium was lifted. Their business license was not denied, it was just suspended until our new ordinance could be in place and the moratorium would be lifted. So, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Okay. We will now have a presentation by the applicant, Su Fen Lu, or a representative.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name's Robert Zhen, I'm Su Fen's friend. I'm just interpreter today for Su Fen.
Okay.
This is her husband, Mr. Zhen.
Okay. All right. So, you're going to interpret for her?
Yes.
Okay. All right. You, you come to the microphone, and then she can speak, and then...
In August of two thousand and sixteen, the police officer came to my massage shop to do the investigation or to check out whatever. Yeah. Because one of our employee, the work permit was, you know, a mistake, so it was the wrong, uh, the...
是用的过期的吗? 什么东西? 啊，这是他自己本人的
对，他本人的
没放上去是吧?
哦，yeah, because, because of the mistakes, so we put one of our employees' work permit on the wrong side, because it's supposed to be the current permit supposed on the top, but we put the current permit underneath, put the, the wrong permit on the top. So, this kind of mistakes. Yeah, actually, and later, the city and the... Let me do a closed business. I went to the city hall, I asked why you want to close my business, because they told me I don't have a massage license. And the city, yeah, the city hall asked me for the California massage license. I said, I don't have it. Yeah, because when I was applying for the business license in Aspana, they didn't require me to provide the California massage license. And when I was applying for the business license, and the city hall told me, said, as a business owner, you don't have to, to have your massage license. Yeah, because they asked me for the California massage license, I don't have it, and I told them, my wife, and she got one, the effective, and the massage license. Yeah, and, and the city hall told me, I said, yeah, you can use your wife's license. So, we followed the government guide, but we do whatever they tell me to do, but until right now, our license still, our application still suspended. Yeah, in order to get our license done, so we, yeah, keep, you know, and doing whatever the city hall told me to do. I don't know what's going on. We did so much thing, and we go through, and so much inspection, but we still cannot get our license, this license. Yeah, and we, we are, both my, my wife and I are new immigrant, so we came to the United States, and, and, and we don't, we are, we are low-income people, so we borrowed a lot of money and invested almost twenty thousand dollars on this, on this business. And, yeah, until right now, we still paying the monthly payment, the rental. So, I don't know why, so what's going on? Why the government, the city, city hall want to, to, to close my business? So, I don't know what's going on, because, like, we, we just want to be a good, like, the citizen, to work so hard and to make a living, and we, and to whatever, we, yeah, to follow the, the city hall's guide, and I don't know why so doing business so hard. Yeah, I wish the city hall can give me answer and approve my license, and we can open for business and make a living, so otherwise, I don't know how to survive.
哦，我的陈述完毕了
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any other testimony you wish to give?
I have some, yes, for more? No.
Thank you. All right. I will now go to Director Elms. Do you have any additional comments?
I do want to add that the previous business was found by the community, the Code Enforcement Division... to have violations. And the applicant applied for a new business license. Their violations were extensive. There were items found within the business that were unpermitted. There was a residence within the business. So outstanding issues that were of serious violation. And then the applicant applied for a new business license. Business walk was walked through. Fire, as I previously explained, as well as building, found numerous issues, walked through that with the applicant. And still to today, we do have still uncompleted required items with the building department, which do not clear this business for operation. So with that, as well as the existing moratorium, I would ask that the city council deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the Community and Economic Development Director to suspend processing of this business license until the moratorium is lifted.
Thank you. Wait, 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 wait. Okay, I'm gonna allow you a little additional time just to respond, but wait just one minute. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna allow you five more minutes at the maximum.
Yeah, that's all.
就现在一个小小的，我们已经做了，但是我可能最近要...
That's all on the list. So we have finished. That's all. Yeah, so all project we finished.
对，就是只有一个排，那个...
So only one, like dryer and washer things is not finished yet. The rest are all finished. That's the list.
Yes, are there any other comments from you?
还有什么其他的说的？ 关于洗洗衣机啊。
啊，对，就是洗衣机。
Yeah, everything is finished. Only this is the washer and dryer that...
Okay, you've stated that. Is there any other, are there any kind of other comments?
还有什么其他的？
哎，就说一个...
还有什么些，都说完了。Yeah, another electronic furnace is also unfinished.
CTO这边就是查这一点的，其他都全部通过。
Okay, anything else?
还有其他的吗？没有，no.
Okay, thank you. Director Elms?
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to clarify that that is a fire department inspection list. The building department is what still has outstanding issues. And the applicant's representative is correct, there are, there are two outstanding issues still with the building department. One of which is the duct from the dryer. It cannot be a flexible pipe, which they fixed what is visible, but this pipe goes out through the attic and through the building out through the outside of the building. And where it's not visible, there's still flexible pipe. So that needs to be fixed, as well as a GFI that needs to be corrected by the sink. It needs to be a proper GFI to meet the electrical code. And those are building issues, not fire issues that were previously cleared.
Okay, and the massage license that he mentioned, is that also under our jurisdiction to have, if we have one or not have one?
Yes, massage establishment licenses are under our jurisdiction. California Massage Therapy Council is the certificate. They issue the certificate and we establish, we issue the establishment license.
Is that under health and safety?
It is.
Yes.
Currently, right now, just the previous ordinance, the previous item on your agenda, you reorganized that. Now it will be under the Business Regulation Code.
Okay, and they do not obtain one, they did not have one at this time?
They did not have the proper licensing, as well as the people that were there performing massages weren't able to produce any of their licenses as well at that inspection.
Okay, we have heard testimony from the applicant and we have heard testimony from the city council, the two reports. Yeah, it's city staff, sorry. And it is now back to the council level. Are there any other reports? At this time, I would like to accept, do you have any other documentation you would like to present to us?
We can take notice of that because that's our document, so they don't have to present it to you.
Yeah, we have, we have that document, that's ours, okay? Anything else? Okay, thank you. Alright, so I will now accept the report from the applicant and accept the report from the city staff. And being no further record to be entered, I will now go to questions and comments by council, if any. But before, please don't make a motion yet. Because I would like to read the motion alternatives to you. Motion to grant the appeal of Sufen Liu and direct Community and Economic Development Director to process the application. That's one choice. The other choice is motion to deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the Community and Economic Development Director. So now, do you have any questions, council, at this time? Not hearing any. I will now go to the motion portion of this appeal. And do I have a motion? Okay, let's go to Mrs. Lewis.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, could you read those options again, please?
Yes, the two options, or unless you have an additional one. Motion to grant the appeal of Sufen Liu and direct the Community and Economic Development Director to process the application for the business license. Is that correct? Alright, okay. Motion to deny the appeal of the applicants and affirm the decision of the Community and Economic Development Director, basically to deny the applicant's appeal and not issue a business license.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal and to affirm the decision of the Community and Economic Development Director.
Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion.
It's been motioned by Mrs. Lewis to deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the Community and Economic Development Director. And it's seconded by Mr. Silveira, and I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Director Maloney?
Maria?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Valalta?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go on to item 10. Okay, public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. 10A, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of revisiting the regulation of massage establishments and services ordinances, ordinance of the Los Angeles Municipal Code. Item 10A1, ordinance number 1162, which will be voting on, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles amending in its entirety, Chapter 16 of Title 11 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code Regulation of Massage Establishments and Services. And we are going to go to Director El, yes, for Stat, Community and Economic Development Director, Elms, for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our city attorney will be presenting this presentation for us tonight.
Alright, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, audience members. I have awesome PowerPoint for you tonight on this matter. This is actually a total amendment of your current massage establishment ordinance. And the reason for the amendment is that recently, the state of California has changed significantly state law concerning massage establishments. And most recently, in AB 1147, actually, for the last two or three years, the state has been going back and forth in terms of the laws that cities must follow in terms of massage establishments. And at one time, the city, within the last three years, had very little jurisdiction over massage establishments. But through AB 1147, a lot of that authority has given back, been given back to local jurisdictions. So I have a short presentation for you tonight. Thank you, Sandra Benetti, for putting this together for me. So the purpose of the ordinance, first of all, our ordinance currently is about 12, 15, 20 years old. It doesn't meet the state requirements regarding the California Massage Therapy Council being established to provide background for massage therapists. So our current ordinance is silent on that. And so what we're trying to do here is to not only conform to state law in terms of the regulation of therapists, but also to revamp the ordinance in terms of establishments so that we can have a orderly regulation of legitimate massage therapists and establishments in the city of Los Angeles and discourage, hopefully, all the bad things that massage establishments get a bad name for. So we're gonna try to discourage that type of behavior through this ordinance. I hope you had time to read the ordinance because I'm not gonna go through it line by line. But it's basically divided into two major parts. The first major part that I want to talk about tonight is regarding the regulation of massage therapists. And those are actually the employees or the independent contractors that provide the actual massage service. According to state law, if a massage therapist has a CAMTC certification, they are exempt from local regulation in terms of their background check, their health, and their education. So that's the California Massage Therapy Council. Most new people into the business are getting those certifications. And as such, once they come to the city and try to get involved in the city's licensing, the city has to accept their certification as, and can't require any further education, any further background on a person with a CAMTC certification. So it's all being done at the state level. So we have this group of people now that are performing massages that have a CAMTC certification. And as I just explained, as to them, we have very little authority in terms of their licensing, their education, their background, so on and so forth. But also, here in the city of Los Angeles, we have a number of established therapists who've been doing business within the city for quite some time under the city's certification. And so what we've tried to do in the massage therapist portion of this ordinance is recognize those that have certificates and those that don't. As to those that don't, which are, there are a few here in town that don't have a certificate, which have gone through our process and have gone through our educational requirements, so on and so forth. We're, this ordinance is gonna exempt them for a CAMTC certification. And it's only gonna exempt those that have, that are, as of January 1st, were licensed and doing business within the city of Los Angeles. So if there's a massage therapist who had a business license and a massage therapist permit issued by the city prior to January 1st, 2018, we're gonna allow them to continue to provide massage therapist services and not have to produce a CMTC certification. The CMTC certification is expensive, you have to go through a process. And we felt that those that had gone through our process before and were currently active therapists within the city should be entitled to an exemption. And we're allowed to do that under the law. And so we've carved out this exemption, and I think it only really affects three or four massage therapists actively working in the city of Los Angeles right now. So that's, if you break down these massage therapists, you gotta break down those that have the CMTC certificate and those that don't. As to all of them, this ordinance is gonna require them to register with the Community and Economic Development Department. And we're gonna ask, they're gonna be required to register before May 1st of 2018. And that includes employees and independent contractors. Those that register that have CMTC certification are gonna have to provide their certification from the CMTC. Those that don't are gonna have to apply for an exemption. And they're gonna have to, we're gonna have to confirm that they met all of the all of the requirements and the standards that we had in place prior to January 1, 2018. So we're gonna have two classes of massage therapists. Those that have a certificate and those that are, the city has deemed exempt from a certificate because they met the city's criteria prior to January 1, 2018. After, after January 1, 2018, we will not be allowing anybody else an exemption. And you will have to have a CMTC certification. And the reason for that is it's easier for the city to administer it with the certification. We don't have to go through the live scan, live scan background check. We don't have to go through the health check, particularly the tuberculosis check. We don't have to expend the energy to check on the education and the training. That's all done at the state level. So as to those that come in the future, any massage therapist other than the ones that we're gonna exempt, like I've explained before, are gonna require the state certification. Question? Sure.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Vaughn, the C, it's a CMTC certification. Is that for every single person who actually has hands-on in massaging, or is that for someone who owns the business?
No, it's just for the person providing the massage service. The second part of the ordinance is gonna deal with the establishment owners.
Okay, so every employee who's massaging is required to have one of these certificates?
They're either gonna have to have a certification from the CMTC or they're gonna have to have been deemed exempt by the Community and Economic Development Director because prior to January 1, they were providing massage therapy under our criteria.
Well, I was speaking more of after January 1.
After January 1, any new folks are gonna have to have that certification.
Alright, thank you.
And that's basically, this slide is showing you. Also, the code, a very important part of the code is we're gonna, if any of the ones that we granted exemption to, we're gonna have the ability to suspend or revoke their license if they, if there are grounds to revoke them because they're engaged in activities that are beyond their exempt permit or they're doing anything that's grounds for suspension or revocation. The state of California will be doing that on behalf of those that are certified. We will only be doing it on behalf of those that are exempt. So if certified massage therapists through the CMTC are doing, not obeying the rules of the CMTC, and there's quite a few, we can report that and they will take the suspension and revocation process through. We don't have to do that, which is another good thing, assuming they do what they're supposed to do. We're gonna require each of those therapists to register annually so that we can confirm that they actually have an active invalid license. That the piece of paper is what it says and it's active invalid, it hasn't been suspended, hasn't been revoked. So we're gonna require all therapists to register with the city annually, including those that are exempt and those that are CMTC. those that are exempt and those that are CMTC certified. And that's what this says, that basically, they should register by May 1, 2018. So that's it with the massage therapists. If you read the background information I gave you with the staff report, it has the law in there from the state standpoint, and you can see that there is a rigorous testing and education component to the state certification. Our local component for our exempt people is just as rigorous. And so, again, that's a good thing. It kind of takes that problem out of the hands of the city to be double-checking on all those things. So that's just the therapists. Now, in terms of the establishments, what we're talking about here is, we're talking about the owners of the establishment. They don't have to have a CMTC permit, but they have to have an establishment permit. Or they don't have to have one certificate if they're not providing massage therapy. If they're just the owner of the establishment, they're going to have to get an establishment license from the city. And this is in addition to a business license. So the establishment license is just geared towards massage establishments. And it'll be a one-year license. The Community and Economic Development Director will be able to condition it reasonably. And that person's going to have to pass a live scan background check. So we're going to have a little bit more control over the establishments than we will have over the certified therapists. The permit is non-transferable, and if this ordinance is adopted, we're going to require the initial application for everybody to be made by May 1, 2018. Those that are currently operating will be allowed to operate until their application is approved, denied, or whatever happens there. So if they come in and apply by April 30th, they're good to go until the processing of their application. If they don't apply by April 30th or honor before May 1st, they'll be operating not in accordance with the new ordinance. So there's going to be a fairly rigorous application process for the establishment that's going to cover building codes, fire codes, health and safety codes. And there's going to be fairly rigorous conditions of approval that are going to go along with it in terms of hours of operation, the type of advertisement, the type of operation, in terms of the type of services they're going to provide. And they're going to have obligation to provide the city with a list of all their massage therapists with proof that all of their therapists are certified or exempt. So it's going to be much more rigorous than a business license, and it's going to be much more hands-on in terms of the city permitting this. And basically, the owner of the massage establishment is going to be responsible for the activities within their business and are going to be subject to some fairly significant regulation. Like I said, we can't regulate the therapists if they have a CMTC license, but we can regulate the establishments. And so, I think one of the conditions of approval is the hours of operation. No more 24-hour massage establishments. I believe one of the conditions is going to be is that you cannot operate from, is it 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM? And there's going to be some conditions in terms of the type of advertising they do. We are seeing lots of provocative advertising by local massage establishments, which only attracts bad actors and illicit activity, which we don't want in our city. And we're going to be encouraging our massage establishments to be a clean and lawful business operation. There will be a permit-denial-suspension-and-revocation process. I'm not going to go through that in detail, but we'll have the ability, based on reasonable grounds, to deny, suspend, or revoke a massage establishment permit, essentially shut them down if they are in violation of any of our local ordinances or any state or federal statutes. Oh, wow, I like that. So I can, that was nice, I like that. I think that's some massage going on up there on the screen, I hope. So if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them. Is this a public hearing?
Yes.
This is a public hearing, so I'd ask you to open it up for the public as well. The ordinance is very detailed, and I tried not to get into that on the PowerPoint, but I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Ms. Silveira, do you have a question? Do you want, yes, thank you. All right. Any other questions? I want to open up the public hearing first, and then I'll bring it back to council level for any questions. Is that okay? All right. So if we could, at this time, I'd like to open a public hearing and receive public comment on ordinance number 1162. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing on ordinance number 1162 and bring it back to council level. And we have a question from Mr. Silveira.
Yeah, Mr. Vaughn, so the establishment fee will be in addition to, or the establishment permit will be in addition to a business license, correct?
That is correct.
And what are going to be the fees associated with that?
Those haven't been developed yet. We're going to be doing that, coming back to you by resolution, but they will just be a cost recovery-type fee for, for instance, the live scan and the processing of the establishment. We do not believe there will be any fee for the therapist to register if they have a CMTC license. We're debating internally whether the exempt ones will be required to pay, or will be asking you to require them to pay a processing fee.
And if I recall, there's possibly like three of those in the city?
I think there may be a half dozen that would have, from our census, I think there may be a half dozen that may qualify if they apply by May 1st.
Director Ong?
She would know better than I.
That's right, the actual therapist, that's set aside the establishments. We have about three establishments, including China Massage that you heard tonight. But therapists, I'd probably say that we have about six or seven therapists in town.
So the six or seven therapists that are currently in town, they need to apply for, and we will reach out to them, they need to apply by May 1st for a therapist permit and/or register if they're CMTC certified. And then the establishments in town, whether they're not, they have a business license currently, will need to apply for a massage establishment permit prior to May 1, 2018.
Okay. And then, at this point, moving forward, if you're not grandfathered into the prior to January 1, 2018, we will only accept the California permit?
Correct. And then, there are some exemptions that I didn't mention, and we've, in terms of establishments, and those would be health clubs, gyms, athletic clubs, clubs that provide massage as not their main part of their business activity. They wouldn't need an establishment permit, but their therapists would need either a CMTC permit or be exempt. So in terms of In Shape City, the Racket Club, those types of places who are only providing massage maybe 5% or 10% of what they're doing over there, we didn't think it was appropriate that they have to go through a massage establishment permit, but their therapists will have to register.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Yes, sir.
Now, this would not affect physical therapists?
No, they're exempt by state law. Doctors, physical therapists, chiropractors, there's a whole statutory scheme of folks that are not, are not required to go through this.
Thank you.
We have been getting quite a few calls and inquiries regarding out-call massages. And so there is a provision in the ordinance that deals with that. And they also have to have the same licensing. They won't have to have an establishment license if they don't have a permanent establishment. But there will be a whole laundry list of rules and regulations for them, hours of operation, where they can perform massage services. And the ordinance indicates that they cannot perform those services in a motel or hotel room or some type of transient occupancy location, and they can't provide those in their own residence. It has to be out-call, because we don't want a massage therapist to start a home office business, for instance, in a residential district. But there is a need for out-call massage where somebody who legitimately, for maybe medical reasons, needs the massage therapist to come to them. So we wanted to have the ability to do that. And we're limiting the hours of operation, and they will have to register, just like if they were working in an establishment. If they're an independent contractor, they will have to apply for a business license as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right. So we have two actions before us tonight. And those two actions are to waive the first reading. And the second action is the introduction of ordinance number 1162. Do I have a motion to waive the first reading? Oh, Ms. Silveira, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1162 as read by title.
Mr. Freya.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Silveira, second by Freya, for the waiving of the first reading of ordinance number 1162. Mr. Silveira.
I should vote on that motion first.
Oh, sorry about that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to the introduction of ordinance number 1162.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1162 as read by title.
Mr. Freya.
Second.
Motion by Silveira, second by Mr. Freya, for the introduction of ordinance number 1162. Director Maloney, roll call.
Freya?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Salalta?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. All right. You're welcome. Let's go on to item 11, Consideration of Regional Transportation Impact Fee, RTIF Options. And we're going to go to our city manager, Alex Dorazis. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could switch over to my presentation, please? I think it's there on the desktop. To the computer, Mayor, to the presentation. There we go. All right, thank you. So, let's see, I don't think I... There we go, all right. Am I pushing the... Oh, no, that's... Are we at the beginning? No, that's not the beginning of my presentation. There we go.
Are we good?
Yes, I think we're good. Thanks, everyone. Sorry about the technical difficulties. So the MCAG Board is in the process of considering options regarding the future of the regional, of the RTIF. So at their November 17 special board meeting, the MCAG Board gave MCAG staff direction to develop a range of options regarding the future of RTIF. They considered those preliminary options at their December 13 meeting. At the January 10 TRB meeting, those options were presented as an informational item to the TRB. And tomorrow, the MCAG Board will be considering this range of options again at their board meeting. And in anticipation of that meeting, the purpose of this agenda item is for the council to have a discussion and provide direction to the city's representative to the MCAG Board, the mayor. So just a little background on the RTIF status, there's about $4.9 million in the RTIF program fund, about $9 million, and these are rounded numbers. Definitely wouldn't pass an audit, so this is city manager math. So $4.9 million in the RTIF program, about $9 million has been expended. Throughout the life of the RTIF program, about $1.7 million has been collected in Los Banos. As the council's aware, Los Banos is not collecting the RTIF currently. And the only two jurisdictions that are currently collecting the RTIF are Atwater and Merced County. In the staff report, you'll see a 2008 adopted project list and a 2016 project list, which has not been adopted at this point. So I'll jump right into the options. Option 1 is status quo. As mentioned in the previous slide, Atwater and Merced County are the only two jurisdictions currently collecting the RTIF. The MCAG Board under this option, and these options were again developed by MCAG staff. So in this option, the board would allocate the RTIF funds to the 2008 project list, or alternatively, the jurisdictions could adopt the 2016 project list and allocate funds to those projects. And obviously, collecting the RTIF would be up to individual jurisdictions. Moving to option 2, we're calling this the recommitment to RTIF and adopt 2016 study alternative. So in this option, the jurisdictions would approve an updated RTIF program. We're calling that the 2016 study. In that 2016 study, there's a list of revised projects. In this option, all jurisdictions would collect the RTIF, and the board would allocate the funds to eligible projects. The project list could be updated in the future if the jurisdictions wanted to do that. Option 3, this series of options would require the elimination of the RTIF. And while there are a number of iterations in option 3, the common theme and thread here is the elimination of the RTIF, and all jurisdictions would cease collecting the RTIF. So under option 3A, the MCAG Board would allocate funds to projects. You could either use the 2008 project list, or the 2016 project list could be used if it were approved by the jurisdictions. Option 3B would create an east-west, would create an east-west option. This option would use the east-west methodology that was created by the Measure V Expenditure Plan, and the funds for projects would be considered by the east-west regional project committees. Similar to Measure V, those projects would be recommended to the MCAG Board, and you could either use the 2008 project list or adopt the 2016 project list, again, if it was approved by the jurisdictions. Again, there would be a number of ways that the funds could be allocated and distributed under option 3B. This is option 3B1. You could divide the funds east-west using the Measure V method, which is 50% by population and 50% by road mileage. Option 3B2, you'd divide the funds east-west based on contributions of individual jurisdictions. And you'll note, I don't have dollar amounts and didn't do the math to determine what the cost or the allocations would be, so I don't have that math at this point. Option 3B3, you could allocate the funds using other considerations. I'd call this kind of the bucket of options. You know, there could be a number of ways to distribute the funds if the east-west methodology were used. were, were used, so that, that, the options there could range. Option 3C, you could allocate the funds on, based on contributions, using a percentage, a percentage spread to distribute the funds. Under this methodology, there was some math that was, that was done by the MCAG staff. The city could receive, you know, about $640,000 under this option. Just want to, to make it clear to the council that, and set a reasonable expectation, regardless of what option were to be pursued, the city would likely not receive a check anytime soon. We would need to spend funds, however, however they're distributed, only on eligible projects that are either in the 2008 list or the 2016 list. So again, just want to set reasonable expectations that I wouldn't anticipate this would be a large windfall of funds to the city, and it would, it would take a probably lengthy process for, for the funds to eventually be distributed. Again, the MCAG board is meeting tomorrow, so what we're looking for this evening is some, you know, council discussion, direction to the mayor, so that he can represent the interests of the council tomorrow. We would anticipate coming back to the council based on whatever action the board, MCAG board would take tomorrow. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it back over to the mayor and the council for your discussion.
Okay. There was, been some lengthy discussion, and, and we, we talked about this extensively at MCAG. And as you can see, there are only two jurisdictions that are still in the, the RTIF itself. And just a little more information to probably give you a little bit more confusion. And, and that is, to date, there's only been one project funded by the RTIF, and that is the Atwater-Merced Expressway, to the tune of $9 million. And that money, I, I don't have the, the lists of, of funds that were put in, but that was basically a Merced County project and an Atwater project. Some of the things that I looked at in the, and I don't want to drive the discussion, but some of the things I looked at is that, who received a benefit from the RTIF? Gustine, no money has been expended to them from the RTIF, and they put in, I think roughly, I could be wrong, $150,000 or so. And then Dos Palos put in another 140, 150,000. No benefit was received. The, yeah, Los Banos put in 1.7, and basically, they say that 135,000 has been expended on the bypass, but of that 135,000, I believe 100,000 is going to be returned by Caltrans. So basically, 35,000 possibly has been expended trying to buy the land, which was never, which was never continued because the funds were allocated to another project, Atwater-Merced Expressway. So, Merced, as I can see, I'm not, I don't think they received any benefit. So the only two entities that received any benefit from the RTIF funds are the, is Merced County and Atwater, the city of Atwater. Oh, I forgot one city, that's Livingston. Livingston did not contribute any funds to date for the, for the RTIF.
They show 117,000.
Livingston?
2016.
Huh?
Mayor, if I might?
Yes, go ahead.
So I, I forgot to mention that I included to the, for the council and the, and the, the audience, a revised staff report from the MCAG staff to the board. It's on the dais, and that does list and include contributions by jurisdictions.
There it is.
And, and costs for the projects that have been, received RTIF funds to date, which would be about 8.8 for Atwater-Merced Expressway, and about $130,000 for the Los Banos bypass. And I think you mentioned it, we're anticipating those funds that were provided to Caltrans to be refunded.
Returned, yeah.
And returned to MCAG, which would mean they would be eligible for allocation in the future.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. No, the only one I missed here is, is Livingston, 170,000, 117,251. So, this is what's before you, and I'm not sure, we don't have a breakdown of, or do we, not that I see, of, of how much was expended from Merced County for the Atwater-Merced Expressway? Is that on here?
At the bottom of the page, there are two... No, not by county.
Not, not by county and city.
No, just total project.
Yeah, just, just total project cost, yeah. So my point was, is if you received a benefit, that should be subtracted from what you put in. And if you didn't receive a benefit, then what kind of percentage or what can you get back of, of what you put in? So that's just my two cents. So I'm, I want to listen to everyone else. Mr. Faria.
Yeah, Mayor, I agree with you. I'd like to redistribute the money to the jurisdiction based, the various jurisdictions based on how much we put in, each jurisdiction put in, minus what was spent in and for that jurisdiction's projects, and then use that, some kind of a mathematical formula to figure that out. And I know we could benefit either by bringing that money straight home and using it directly, or possibly using it to leverage projects in Los Banos and around Los Banos to benefit Los Banos. Now that you've got Measure V, it should be pushing forward. I think these funds were collected, it was kind of, kind of a hodgepodge in inconsistent way. Different jurisdictions had different motivations, and, and so I think that if we were to distribute them back to the relative jurisdictions, and then use a mathematical formula based on what was spent from that, to benefit that jurisdiction on their projects, and ours wasn't much because our project was too big to, to get much done. And then I think that would be a fair way to, to deal with that, and beneficial to everyone.
Let me ask you a question, and then...
Sure.
Continue. You know, part of the, the discussion centered around, and I brought up this option to MCAG to talk about an east-west share for the money itself. And that way, Dos Palos and Gustine and Los Banos, because we are a west-side contingency, instead of just saying, return the money to, to Los Banos, and, and return it to Gustine and, and Dos Palos, return it to the west-side committee, and then the regional committee then could decide a project because we'd have control of the, of those funds.
Sure.
And, and I thought that was, you know, another option that possibly could be explored, and I wanted to bring that up tonight. So, anyone else?
Yeah, that's, I, I, that's a good idea.
Okay.
And it's in the spirit of, of the Measure V east-west concept, so I would support that as well.
Okay. Let's go on to Mrs. Lewis, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to your last comment, the question that I would have is, if the money is the option that you, you presented a scenario, if that is something that's considered, would the, would the west-side committee have total jurisdiction over making that decision, or can it be over, overridden by the MCAG board as a whole?
If, if they, as my understanding, Alex, please jump in on this. It's my understanding that if they made the, the finding that there was an east-west split on the money, then the west side would control their regional project money, but as in the Measure V document, you'll see that MCAG has the final say whether the money can be spent or not. But if they say no, the money still would revert back to the west side if that was an option that would, that would be.
That, that would be my biggest concern, is that if the money goes back to the various jurisdictions in the west side, and if the committee governing the west side is, makes a decision about how that money is to be spent based on a project, and then MCAG turns, turns around and overrides that decision, it, it doesn't really benefit us as a whole. That's how I'm hearing this.
And, and I think the follow-up would be, do they abscond with our funds? No.
Well, that's basically how I see it.
No. No. That wouldn't be part of that, and that wouldn't be something I would ever agree to, because it would be, it would be, mine, mine has always been with unification, west side and east side, because to date, the, the project list is quite extensive for the east side, and close to a half, got a half a billion dollars in projects that have been spent on the east side and nothing on the west side.
Well, and, and that was my...
Including our three entities.
My next statement was that the 2008 list, which I don't remember everything that was on it, and neither do I remember everything that was on the 16 list, but I do know that they were heavily weighted for the east side.
Yeah.
And that Atwater-Merced Express, for the public's information, has, has been funded, I believe, by SB1. And that has not been taken out when we had these meetings with MCAG, they kept that project in.
Oh, you mean Campus Parkway?
Yes.
Yes, not Atwater-Merced Expressway.
Okay, Campus Parkway.
Yeah.
And, and again, that's been funded by the state of California under SB1.
Yes.
But the, the organization that they hired to present the projects to the various cities kept that project in. For what reason, I don't know. But I don't like the idea that there's money allocated for something already, but you keep the project in there for some safety reason that is beyond my imagination. RTIF, with Measure V having passed, in my opinion, that really takes care of a lot of what the RTIF was supposed to have taken care of.
It's okay, it's a curve. There you go.
And so to turn around and ask our business community to pay these additional taxes again for RTIF on projects that they're building is, is another form of discouragement to me, to bring businesses into our community. So with the options that our city manager has given us, I would be in favor of eliminating the RTIF and that nobody has to pay it, and nobody deals with it. And if there's a division of money coming back to the west side for us to spend on projects between Dos Palos, Los Banos, and Gustine, I think that's appropriate. But over taxation of a community and, and a business doesn't allow a community to thrive and to grow. And that's how I see this RTIF happening, is that we're asking people to pay more money when they're already paying money through SB1, we're already paying money through Measure V, and it's, it's just getting a little bit much. So I, I wouldn't be in favor of continuing this project at all. Thank you.
The, I, I think the sentiment is, is enjoyed by a, a number of people on the MCAG committee. And, and I, I'm not here, you know, I want unification, and I want to bring back a unified front. That's why, number one, when I talked to our, our city manager, we talked about putting this on the agenda. And number two, when I brought this to MCAG to put on the, the agenda too, it was, it was important that, that I think we come back with a reasonable suggestion as to how this can, how we can dissolve this, and if that's the, the, the ruling of, of this body, of which I will respect. And I, I, it's important that MCAG has a lot of power in the, in the county. And, and I need your input when these decisions are make, for, made for, for certain items, and, and this is one of them, because I want to bring back a, a decision that basically incorporates us, and how we think the money should be fairly distributed, or should it still be collected, or, or, or how it should be. So I'd like to see unification, and I like the two ideas right now with the, of what's been discussed so far, and that's, that's kind of what I thought, because we are west-side and, and our neighbors are Dos Palos and Gustine, and, and they need, they need projects too. So, so, you know, what's explained to me many times, they spend money in our community. But this is the west side, and, and we need some projects over here. Okay, let's go on to Mr. Silveira.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, a couple of questions. One is, I would be curious to know on the county's portion that they collected, if there's a, I mean, they have a, a flat number there, what portion of that was collected on the east side and the west side of the county's share? I don't know if they track that.
Well, the, the numbers are here of what they collected.
It's, it's a total number, but it just says the county, but, but the county has jurisdiction on both sides.
Yes.
So I would be curious to know, you know, what the percentage is, if, if there's a historical trend. Secondly, I like the idea of, I think it, it's the cleanest way is to bring the money back to the region, to split it between the east and the west side region, because when you look at, you know, it's called the Merced Express, Atwater-Merced Expressway, so does, did Merced enjoy some benefit from that? The county enjoyed some benefit from that, but if you're on the county on the west side, do you really enjoy the benefit of the Merced-Atwater Expressway? So I don't, I don't know that it goes, you know, how you divide it back to each individual jurisdiction based upon who collected. I think it gets really subjective as to who benefited, who didn't, what did you gain from it? I mean, because if that's the case, then I don't know if any projects expended in Dos Palos, so therefore, do you give Dos Palos back the whole, you know, 109,000 that they collect would go back to them? Gustine, I don't see anything, so they get their 152,000. You know, then you, Los Banos gets 1.8, well, you start getting pretty close, there's nothing left, and then, and how much? So I don't know. I think that, to, to be, the fairest way to do it would be, really, is just to take that Measure V program on how the money's divided. I think that's probably the fairest way to do it. But, but that being said, I, I would be curious to know on, when you talk about an east-side/west-side split of, I would like to see what an east-side/west-side split of the county's portion, what that would be, and I don't know if those numbers are available.
Yeah, just like, you know, how much from the county was involved in, in, in Atwater-Merced Expressway?
Exactly.
Same thing.
And when you, and you look, and then part of it is, is, we have, I, I want to know is, you know, it was a regional traffic impact fee, that fee was collected for, has, they have to be road projects. The way that I understand it, that those projects have to be on a list, we can't just, unless we, we come up with a new list, but I don't know, can you, with a new list, can you come back and expend money that you already collected based off of an old list, is what I'm saying?
They have to be on the RTP, Regional Transportation.
That, and that is a requirement of RTIF money.
And, and Alex, did you want to chime in on this?
For a project to be eligible, eligible for funds and funding, it has to be in the NEXUS study, and it would have to be, it could either be from the 2008 list or a revised project list. So MCAG shortly, shortly after I got here, MCAG was going through the process of updating the RTIF program and updating the project list. They completed that study, but that study with that revised project list, and it's in the staff report, and I referred to it in my presentation as a 2016 list, has not been adopted by any of the jurisdictions. So the, the list that stands at this point for RTIF eligible projects is the 2008 project list. If we, if there was a desire to have other projects, it would have to be amended into an updated RTIF study, or the 2016 project list and study could be used as the eligible project list.
And then, so if I, my memory serves me correctly, when we had discussions about Measure V money, we came up, we had workshops, and I still, I don't know that I've seen a final list of what's, with the, with the final outcome of that, that...
It's not out yet.
It's not out yet.
No.
Would, would the, that list, to me, makes more sense, to, to be able to tie that to this 2016 list, just for the simple fact that if we have to only go off of the 2008 list because the seven, excuse me, the 16 list, list has not been approved yet, I mean, we're out. We don't, we don't have a project on there. The, the bypass at 497 million's on there, so we don't have a project. You know, Dos Palos, at least they left theirs vague enough, it's just called Dos Palos Road Improvements for 5 million, and then Gustine has a truck route bypass at 5 million. So I, I would, I would like to see almost that, however this works out, that this RTIF money... however this works out, that this RTIF money, if the, if the program goes away, which I think that's kind of the direction that it's going, that that money go, when we talked about, use that Measure V funding formula, also tie it to that Measure V list of projects, because I know that we came up with some really good projects on the Measure V stuff. Though we have, but that's on the 16 list, it just says Los Banos Improvement Projects.
Right.
But currently, that hasn't been adopted by anybody. So I, I don't know, I think that, I think that, Mayor, I hope that gives you some ideas as, as to what we're thinking and how to proceed.
Well, I'd like us to be all together on a, on a, on a formal option. And, and, and yes, there is another list coming out, and we've identified projects here in Los Banos. But they have to go through the EIER, they have to be on the RTP in order to qualify for this money. But the money can stay there. And, and then when we're ready to do that, we'll have some money, because it's going to take planning money for the, the project that we all like, and that's the Pioneer Trail, the Pioneer Alternative. We all like that one. And, and so that's going to take some planning money. And, and, and if this money could be allocated towards that, fantastic. But, but we have to come up with a reasonable scenario, I think, that, that number one, I don't want to take back someone, it's something that's going to offend everybody, but yet I want to take back something that has a real chance and is, is, is passable by, by this council. Alex, did you want to speak again?
No, I mean, I just wanted to, to follow up on Councilmember Silveira's comments, that we would need to revise the project list to make sure there was a project in Los Banos that would be eligible for RTIF funds. And I, and I believe that the 2016 project list does have a project that could include pioneer widening.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I wanted to hear. Okay, Mrs. Santos.
Thank you. I have to say that I do favor keeping the RTIF and splitting up between the east and west. I think that would be very good, but I would like that we, Dos Palos and Gustine, come through with some type of understanding for the remaining money as well. I do see that the five, excuse me, 5 million that is left in the, the total, in the balance, would be broken up fairly small. And I think also, Mr. Silveira was saying that we don't know what we would get back, it would be just, and it would be essentially pennies of what we put in. So I would like that if we were to split this between east and west, if we were to split this between east and west, that we have an understanding in the west as to how this, we're going to go about this. Just so that there's not that confusion as to, oh, your side's getting too much and bickering essentially between our side at that point, then it's no longer east and west, it's individuals, and I don't think that's the best way to go about that. And I just wanted to confirm, Alex, I know you said that, that numbers weren't quite set in stone, but you said it'd probably be about us, about 650,000 that we'd be getting, coming back to us?
Go ahead.
That, that would be under one, one of the, one of the many options, inter- iterations of options. We wouldn't, I wouldn't have a final number at this point, or a number at this point.
Some of the, the suggestions have been thrown out. What I like about the east/west, and I think the other scenario is using the Measure V formula for a split up, that takes into consideration the county's east and west side. That takes into consideration a formula that's already been, been adopted. It takes into consideration that, that, you know, and now, I think it was, God, help me, someone with, with Measure V. I, I'm not sure what the, the, the split would be with the percentage. Do, I don't remember.
Fifty percent road miles and 50%-
Yes, yes, but what does that equate to with the final percentage of what we receive out of regional project funds on, on east and west side, how we split that up? Wait, 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 wait. Okay, go ahead.
I don't, don't quote me on the exact number, but if say 50% was going to the local projects, I want to say of that 50%, if you were to make that 50% another, let's say it was a million dollars, it'd be about 440,000 was coming to the west side, and then the other part was going, the other 540, 560,000, or whatever the math works out to, was going to the east side. Am I close on that marker, am I way? I, I thought it was like, it worked out to be something like 44% of the locals, the local split, of the regional split, went to the west side region, and then the difference went to the east side region. But I'm, without having it in front of me, I'm not 100% sure.
And you know, and that would work out to just about 2 and 3 million dollars. Somewhere around there, or two, little over 2 and little under 3 for the, for the east side. You know, I mean, these are just options, we're talking about this. And I want to go back with something that's fair, equitable, reasonable, and, and just tell them, hey, we're together on this. Let's see, who's next here? Let's go to Alex Folk. Bill, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I just, I'm not an expert at RTIFs by any stretch, or even impact fees, but I, I know a lot, enough to be dangerous. I would just remind the council that Measure V is an entirely different funding mechanism, it's sales tax, and you can't be, you can't be mixing up those funds in terms of their requirements. For instance, there are requirement, requirements under Measure V that aren't within the RTIF program and vice versa. The RTIF program, winding an RTIF program down, I think is an extremely complex endeavor. Keep in mind that the basic tenet of impact fees, if you don't spend those fees pursuant to your NEXUS study, those fees go back to the developer who wrote the check. And so from my standpoint, I'm not involved with this wind down yet. But I think the RTIF structure, these fees have to be allocated through the RTIF structure. In other words, City Los Banos, or the City of Gustine, or the City of Dos Palos isn't going to get a check one day. It's going to come through an RTIF structure that has a project that meets their structure. And that, that is going to be credited or debited against whatever this allocation turns out to be. So when you say wind down the RTIF, I think that has a lot of different meanings, a lot of different people. To me, what I'm hearing, what it means is you're winding down the portion where you're collecting the RTIF fee currently, well, apparently only two jurisdictions are. And then you're trying to figure out what to do with that pot of money that's still in the RTIF. And I just want to remind you that that money has to be spent under the structure of the RTIF. And so when we're talking about a east side/west side split, that would have to come through some amendment, in my mind, to the current RTIF structure. And the RTIF just doesn't go away, and the only time it goes away is when the money's gone, is how I see it. So the RTIF money can be combined with Measure V money for regional projects, but the RTIF structure never really goes away. And so I think what, I would think what they're getting advised to do is to change the structure in terms of the allocation of the RTIF funds, which in my mind, they should have done at the very beginning of the RTIF to begin with. And you wouldn't be in this mess that we're in now. So just keep in mind, those are separate funds from separate forces. Those are not the City of Los Banos' funds. Those are developer fees that were paid by developers based on a NEXUS study to do regional projects for the regional impacts caused by their project. So I'm hoping MCAG, however you guys, however they decide to do this, is very careful in their legal analysis of how to do that. So you don't have a herd of developers coming in and say, hey, wait a minute, we want our money back. So just want to make sure you as a board aren't mixing up the two concepts of Measure V and the RTIF.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think, I, I think that was clear, that was clear at the MCAG meeting.
So when you're talking about the 216, 2016 list, you're talking simply about an amendment to the RTIF program to add additional projects that maybe more equitably allocate the money that's in the RTIF to, again, regional projects.
Correct.
It doesn't mean the City of Los Banos gets 16 million dollars to then administer however they want. So MCAG as the administering body of RTIF still has to be involved in the administration of those funds. They just won't be involved in the collection of them anymore, it sounds like.
Yeah.
That's just my two cents.
Right, it's, it would be a suspension of the, of the collection, not a suspension, but, but to, to get rid of the collection of the RTIF funds. And then the remaining money would have to be, however it's allocated or distributed, it would have to be a project that would fit the scope and sequence of the RTIF.
Yeah, so if the 2008 list has no projects that are beneficial to the west side in your viewpoint, then you're not going to want to adopt that 2008 list, you're going to adopt a 2016 list if it has a project that's beneficial to, as you see, at the west side, or curate a 2018 list. And there are ways to do that, but there are expensive ways to do that, new NEXUS studies and so on and so forth to expand that list.
And the, the studies that are going on now, we're coming up with a list. And, and if that list qualifies for both projects, then that's even better.
Yeah, so-
Yeah.
So the expectation of the developer, when he pays you that $300,000 check for building his big box store in the City of Los Banos, is that those funds are going for projects that have been studied as he's having an impact on by building his big box store. And so the RTIF is very structured in the way that those funds can be spent and allocated. And there may be some overlap with Measure V, but there may not be as well. So I'm hoping MCAG is getting appropriate counsel on that to make sure that, whatever the allocation is, is that doing it within the structure of their, of their RTIF program.
Correct, and then the adoption of a list that's going to reflect what the RTIF fees can be spent on. Okay, Director Williams, did you have a comment?
No, I was going to chime in on the percentages when Scott was talking about it, but I think he came relatively close. It's just a little bit higher, the balance would be off, because if you remember, we do have that base rate in there, which would skew the percentages a bit, and we were not, it doesn't seem like we'd be getting that base rate here. That's all I was going to say.
Okay. All right, we've discussed this, we've, what's the, what's the pleasure of the council? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, and I, and I appreciate that explanation, Mr. Vaughn. I, at any point, does, I hope it didn't come across, I was thinking that you, those funds were going to be co-mingled. Measure V is its own separate entity, and I understand that. I just was wanting to take that formula that, that Measure V is using and try to use that formula as far as how the split works, to be able to split this. I think that's the fairest way to do it, but understanding that they're two different, they're two different animals.
As long as they amended the RTIF to reflect that.
Exactly. So, and then I, I did pull it up on the Measure V website. It's 44% of the total money goes to the regional split. So 44% of the total money, and then my math's not good enough right now to be able to take 27 out of that 44%, 27% goes to, 27% goes to the east side and 17% goes to the west side. So however that would break down, a 60/40 would be probably relatively close.
So 44 would become the 100%, and then of that 100% of the 44%, then what is the, the split for the east side and west side?
That's for the-
Yeah.
The accountants to figure out, so-
That's a Sonya question.
Yeah, that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
So that's, that's what you're getting at, right? Okay, all right. Okay, Tom, Mr. Faria.
I, I agree that the Measure V formula, I think, is a pretty good formula. Went through a lot of work to generate it, and I think it'd be a pretty fair way to go about it on redistribution. So that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Okay, so do we want to, does someone want to make a motion? And a second, and let's see what, what passes. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I would move to follow option 3B1, I believe is the way we're, that's the, 3B1, which divides the funds east and west based only on the Measure V method. And then, kind of, it's going to be split. The 3B2s could get a little tricky. So it's already pretty muddy, 3B1 is nice and clean. And I think would get to what we want.
Okay, so that would be, let me just clarify one thing, that there's no more continuance of the RTIF funds. This is it, and what's in there would be split according to 3B1, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second for that proposal? Mrs. Santos.
I'd like to second that, I actually do like the 3B1 option.
Okay, and, and then no more collection of the RTIF, okay? Silveira, you had your button on, did you want to talk?
No, that was from before.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Is there any opposition here? Fantastic. I'd like a roll call vote, please. And the motion would be to follow 3B1 and the elimination of the RTIF for future collection. Is that clear enough? Okay, all right. Alex, are you clear with that?
Absolutely.
All right.
So what if the rest of the MCAG board doesn't follow that? Do you have like a backup plan?
Let's see what they come up with tomorrow. That's all I can say. My council, I'm going there if this passes with clear direction from my council. That's what I'm looking at. I can't ask for any more. All right, Director Maloney?
Faria?
Yes.
Johnson-Santos?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Alalta?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously, council, thank you for a, a unified front on this. Now how it comes out is one thing, but that's where they're, you know, I'm going to take a five-minute break.
You got all that.
Hi, my name is Monica.
Hi, Monica.
I, I'm a book director at the story.
Okay. Yeah? Fantastic, fantastic. Yes, okay.
Let me give you mine.
Okay.
Okay.
I just asked one thing. It's all I have. You know, I'm a former school professor, and you know something, I kind of speak, but sometimes, you know, those guys will play the clip on there, just easy drive. That's my only ask.
Nice to meet you.
My name's Monica Les. I love, I've been covering health at the Sunset Sunstar for almost two years, and my focus has changed, but now I'm covering everything Los Angeles. Yes, it's the same first time here. Yeah, same. I love that. Give me my card, just so you have it. Yes, nice to meet you. Thanks.
Are you a new reporter?
Hi, yeah, my name's Monica Les. I'm a, yeah, I'm a new reporter in Los Banos. I work for the Sunset Sunstar and the Los Banos Enterprise. So I've been covering health for the Sunstar for the almost two years.
Are you going to hang out in Los Banos?
Yeah, uh, yeah, it's my job.
Is there office even open?
Um, it's open, well, it's not open for my visiting hours, but I mean, it's open to me. Yeah.
So we'd like more Los Banos news than we're setting. Especially in the Los Banos enterprise would be very nice. Just the enterprise is pretty well-stoked. It's an only nice article. That's right. Kansas City Times, all positive. Well, good luck, good luck.
Thanks, I wanted to just give you guys my card.
Oh, sure. Do you live here in Los Banos?
No, I live in, I mean, no, I live in Sunset.
So you gotta like commute over here for these things?
Yeah.
That's okay. All the positive's not bad, you'll be all right.
Yeah, not too bad.
Yeah. Don't listen to Gene Lee, just do what, do what you think is right. Just saying. She doesn't know how to take that. So how many reporters are there actually over? Because Thaddeus Miller was over here for a while, Corey Pride was over here for a while.
Yeah, well, now, right now, it's Thaddeus and Vicos.
So you're, oh, you're rotating over?
Yeah, yeah, Vicos now covers education and courts for the county. Yeah, so.
So do you have a particular area that you're going to cover?
Los Banos.
Just anything in Los Banos?
Yeah.
Just not city government? Okay, cool. Good for you. I know, I know who to get our press stuff to.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm also, I teach music in high school this week or something.
Oh, cool.
I was looking into.
Who do you play?
Piano is my primary instrument of voice.
I played the violin throughout middle school and high school.
Oh, where?
Well, I grew up in, I grew up in the Bay Area, so I, I went to a school, it was Cappuccino High School.
Oh, yeah, great thing, great music there.
In San Bruno. Oh, you know, you know the school? Oh, interesting.
They were famous with a marching band for years.
Oh, yeah.
Way back in the day, and you know I had a great marching band.
Oh, I actually, I didn't know that.
Back when I was in high school, they were, they were very good. That's very cool. So you play violin?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, you're pretty good.
A little rusty, I mean, I, I used.
Can you have the Messiah violin too?
Probably not now. Probably not now, I've got a rusty.
It'll be a couple of years before we do it again, but we do Messiah in two years.
Oh, okay.
We have a couple of local violin, we have a couple of violin, local violin players that are coming, but we have, we hire pros.
Oh, that's really cool. Yeah, no, I'm sure.
Cappuccino, San Bruno, that's changed a lot, huh?
Yeah.
The growth of theirs in San.
Yeah, no, it definitely is.
Okay, let's go on to item 12. Appointment of commissioners to the following city commissions. 12A Airport Advisory Commission, three vacancies, two two-year terms expiring December 31st, 2019, and one unexpired term expiring December 31st, 2018. And at this time, I'd like to bring forth the name of Dennis Reed for the two two-year terms. And the city clerk will, the two, two-year term, and the city clerk will re-advertise for the other two vacancies. So I'd like to make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second the motion.
Okay, it's a motion by the mayor, second by Mrs. Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go to item B, tree commission. Three-year vacancies, three vacancies, two two-year terms expiring December 31st, 2019. So this is, is that?
It's three, three, emphasizing three, two-year vacancies.
Three two-year vacancies?
Yes.
Okay. So we have three names I'd like to bring forward. John Spivak, Brenda Latham, and Colleen Menefee. I'd like to make that motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Silvera?
I'll second, Mayor.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Mr. Silvera. For the, the three individuals I just mentioned, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Advisement of public notices, let's go on to item 13, two reports. Community and Economic Development Director Elms. Okay. Go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the first item is a conditional use permit for a large family daycare called Because I Care Kids Clubhouse, operated by Lizet, Lizette Reyna, located at 2440 Rock Creek Drive. And then the second item is a general plan amendment. It's actually a text amendment and a site plan review and a negative declaration for Paradise Tomato Kitchen Warehouse Expansion. They're proposing expanding their existing warehouse by 175,034 square feet. And they're proposing a general plan text amendment to allow a higher floor area ratio, which would be consistent with other communities in the Central Valley. These items will be held, or will be discussed at the Planning Commission on Wednesday, January 24th, 2018, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. The conditional use permit will be, the Planning Commission will be the decision-making body, and then the Paradise Kitchen item, the general plan text amendment, and negative declaration will be recommended up to the city council for a review.
Thank you. Let's go on to item 15, city council, oh, excuse me, item 14, city manager's report.
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to city council member reports. Tonight, we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
Nothing to report.
Okay, let's go on to Mr. Silvera.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I wanted, I just wanted to, again, give a thanks to the planning commissioners, the Community and Economic Development Department. We had a very productive meeting last Wednesday night at the community center. I felt like it was, it was the start of some conversations on our 2040 general plan update. There's a few public, two of which I think are still here with us this evening. So a few public members there, but it was a good, open dialogue between Planning Commission and council on kind of what some of their ideas were. And I know some of things we're all very passionate about, what we believe in, and I don't know that all those things were germane to the 2040 general plan update, but I felt like it was an agendized meeting, it was open to the public, and I would, I would encourage staff that, you know, not do the, this is the first time since I've been on council that we actually had a joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting. I would encourage staff to, you know, I don't want to say we have to do one every month or anything like that, but, you know, maybe once or twice a year have those meetings because I think it's important that our, that we get to visit with our Planning Commission members on, on issues, because there are, they, you know, they do a lot of the, I call the heavy lifting. We see the finished product up here, they go through the minutia of looking at the laws, the rules, the regulations, and, and give us what we finished product. So I wanted to, again, commend staff on it, and commend them also on the layout of the meeting. I thought it was, it was very conducive to open discussion between council member, one group wasn't above another group, we were all on a level playing field mixed throughout. So I thought it was a really good, productive first meeting. And the group that we're using to help us with this, and the name on it again is what, Stacy?
Placeworks.
Placeworks. What I do like about them is, is this is going to be a two, two-and-a-half-year project, but they are, they have very specific timelines on when things are going to get rolled out and when things are going to get done. And as you guys have heard me say before, I, I love expediency in government whenever we can do that. So it seems like these, this group is the right group for that, and, and it's not cheap. We're spending a lot of money with them, and so if we're going to spend your hard-earned taxpayer dollars with them, the, at least we could do is require them to be efficient with their time. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go on to Mr. Freya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everyone who helped with the Martin Luther King, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day March, had a nice crowd, nice event, and some great things, and great conversation and great moments there. And we thank the people for putting that on, keeping people aware of his contributions. This year makes 50 years, will make 50 years, it's hard to believe, that he was assassinated April 4th. It's also 50 years that Robert F. Kennedy was assassinated in the same year. It was a very tumultuous time. So we keep, keep these ideas alive with that march and that activity. We have a couple of high school things going on, the high school choir chicken dinner will be going on on Wednesday, January 31st. Tickets available from choir and me, at $10 a person, half a chicken, rice, beans, tortillas from La Morita. And then the ag department, FFA, ag department, ag boosters, not sure exactly if it's direct ag boosters or FFA, all together.
The Los Banos FFA ag boosters.
Okay, all together, and that's going to be on the 3rd of February, that Saturday Dinner Dance. So you can contact the ag department at Los, Los Banos High School, or any of the ag boosters, and get to those. So we appreciate all the support, community activity, all the hard work.
The address where, where your fundraiser is going to be?
Oh, the choir, La Morita is, it's La Morita Market, I can never remember the exact address. It's on H Street.
Corner of H.
H and, corner of H in Texas. I just know when I come in, I know where to get my tortillas, so. Yes.
The flyer that went out didn't have the address on there.
Oh, okay, I'll send the chambers some. I'll give the chambers some info. They, they pulled up an old flyer on it and did that as a favor to us. Thank you, Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, let's go on to Mr. Santos.
Thank you. So at our general plan meeting just last week, I want to echo Silvera, we had a very, I thought it was very nice to have everybody in one room, and it was my first, so I didn't know if that happened more than once, so I was very happy to see that. One thing that I thought was mentioned at the time was a quality control program for our townhouses, apartments, and whatnot. And I, I really like that idea, and I was hoping that is possibly, that is something we can possibly bring up in the future. Just so, because I, just the thought of giving people a better home, it's always been something for me, just, you know, from my roots, and just the thought of having a home and a nice place to live. So I just wanted to see if that's something we can actually bring up in the future, or something that can be done in the future. Or some type of, I don't know, excuse me, I don't know how I'm to bring this up, but if it's some type of, we can bring it up in one of our next meetings, how that's, if it's even possible to do something like that, Alex? Yeah?
You could, you can put it on as a council member request.
Okay.
So what exactly did, so you wanted, what again, as a council member request?
To bring up some, a quality control program for our apartments and, just our housing as of right now. So I, sorry, it's not very refined how I said that, but just if we could bring that up at some point.
Okay.
And then also, I have to say that my heart goes out to the California Dairy closing and the fact that we have 63 people that are being, are losing their jobs within the next few months here, which I think they said is the time that it would take to close that. I know as long as I've lived in this town, that building has always been a bit of a staple, staple there, but yeah, I just want to say my heart goes out to those people who, who unfortunately will be out of, out of jobs soon, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Freya and I attended the Dr. Martin Luther King March on Monday, and, and in, sometimes all of us can make the event, sometimes only a few of us can make the event. But I know that, that every event that, that happens in Los Banos, if, if our total council can be there, we will. But I'm glad we had representation, and it was a, it was a nice event that took place. There was a march, and then that march led to, what was the name of the church, Tom Akent?
Bethel.
New, New Bethel, New, yeah, Bethel Community, Bethel Community Church on, on I Street. And, and then the other, the Martin Luther King celebration continued from there. And so we're great, very grateful to the people that keep the memory going every year and, and putting on this event. Very, very, very nice time, solemn and peaceful event. So with that, I would like to go to the closed session. Conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property located at 1111 G Street, Los Banos, California, APN 026161003, 026161008. A portion, approximately 6.4 acres. City negotiator, city manager Terazis, city attorney Vaughn, city finance director Williams, police chief Breezy. Negotiating parties, Sam Watson, under negotiation, purchase prices and terms of agreement. If there's anything to report, we will do so at the end of the meeting and when we return to adjourn. Thank you and have a nice evening.